Say it again, good evening. Welcome to the August 25 Finance Committee meeting. I am your host again, whether you like it or not. We're gonna roll right into new resolutions, starting with Temporary Resolution 7325, coming through Water, Water Pollution Control. Mr. Wing?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to invite Denise Cruz up, or whoever will be answering questions about this. And while she's on her way up, the background on this is, Council in 2022 previously authorized the not-to-exceed amount for the North Water Treatment Plant project, not to exceed $90 million. And we are edging closer and closer to that number, and it looks like we will exceed that slightly due to some upcoming change orders. I'd like to have Denise describe some of those change orders, please.
Thank you. So as we go through the project, and Councilman Wing was correct, Stephen originally asked for $90 million on the project. The original contract was 95,381. We had $5 million budgeted for contingency, so at that point, we're over the $9 million anyways. We do have some bigger changes coming up as we move into plant startup in two weeks. The two big ones are grading and seeding and landscaping on the site. We deferred that mainly to see what the site was going to look like and how much money we had to spend on this. So that's going to come in under $500,000, but there's a lot of areas to be planted. We did not go overboard on the landscaping. The other one is paving. And again, that was an item that we didn't know what everything was going to turn out to be. We knew the new plant, obviously, but we're doing some paving in the old plant and in the driveway leading up to the swimming pool due to construction traffic. So again, I think that was about $300,000. So the change order we're working on right now is sitting someplace around $600,000, and that will push us up to about $89,500,000, someplace in that area. And then that's obviously not the final change order because we've still got another month to find out what's not going to work. So regardless, we're going to be over $90,000. Stephen's asked for another million for '91. This is all just a paperwork for the city auditor. It's not any new money.
Questions?
Actually, I do. So I've been on the Water Committee for four terms, and I don't remember, I mean, spending, I mean, it's just constant, 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 you know? And Arcadis has been with since '94?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So have they ever come here and done a presentation or anything? Because I don't know that I've ever seen them the whole time. I mean, you know, they're the consultants, and I mean, we just keep spending and spending on this. This is just over the top. And I know you can say, oh, it's a big water plant. But you also told us last Monday during Water Meeting, there might be another big cost again on something. I'm really leery with all this stuff. I would like to have Arcadis come and, you know, do a presentation of what all they've done. Since you guys are all, I just am very confused. I would like to also have, and you always talk about your punch list, I would like to have and be sent to Council the amount it was supposed to cost for this plant. I would like to have the current debt, and if any payout already that you've paid, I would like to have all of Council to give the dollar amount on this.
Okay.
I think we all, I think, and this is taxpayer dollars, I just think that, and then doing the...
So just let me ask, because I provided this to Bob Wolfener in the spring. He did not share that with you?
Did anybody get anything?
That would be no.
Okay.
But once again, it's my understanding, I've not seen anything, but that some of that was incomplete, and he had asked for clarifications. So I don't know if that was the case.
He didn't ask me for clarification, but I just, to try and figure out what you want, and I may give you a call, Becky.
No, don't give me a call. Send me an email.
No, no, to see exactly what you want.
Oh, well, I'll have it right here.
I think all, I think the main thing that she's asking for, so we originally approved the construction contract at $85 million and some change, and then you always have your contingency dollars.
Right.
So whatever you've spent, or however, so really, $5 million and some change is your contingency dollars. So that's, that's what I believe Ms. Teener is asking to see, is where are all those contingencies, where are those contingency dollars being spent, or have been spent on any of your change orders, basically?
Okay.
Right? Does that make sense?
Well, that, and you know, Stephen had come a couple meetings ago, and there was money asked for because some things weren't done, or there was something, you know, you know, every single dime needs to be accounted for here. Because after what you informed us last Monday, there's going to be possibly an even bigger cost than this plant, and I'm really concerned about that.
No, no, there's, it's not a bigger cost. We're looking at the next phase of the Western Transmission Line, which is about $15 million.
But I don't remember that being said before.
Okay. So specifically for the plant, you want to see the...
Yes, because we need to keep track of the dollar amount here.
So the contingency dollars, what'd you spend it on? Right? Okay. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I have a spreadsheet, but Stephen won't be back until the 5th, so it may be...
Okay.
Till after he gets back.
I think we approved $2.5 million of an increase in Arcadis's fee a while back. Is that part of this $5 million that we've utilized at this point?
No.
So that's over and above the contingency?
Yes.
Interesting.
Tom, do you have a question?
Well, I, he asked most of it. I wasn't here when the, you know, we made the, the decisions were made on the plant, and the legislation was passed. So just to make sure I understand, so originally, the budget was $85 million. Is it a $5 million or a $10 million contingency? Because I've heard a couple things here.
So we put, in our loan, we put $5 million for contingencies.
Okay.
And so the contract was $85 million, 381, is what Stephen asked for the authorization to enter into the contract with Kokosin. So that was contract, Stephen asked for $90 million to allow us to enter into contract up to $90 million. So even if you take the contingency, the $5 million on top of Kokosin's contract, it was always going to be over $90 million. We just tried to work in round numbers and hope for the best. So if you take Kokosin's $95 million, $381,000 contract, and add $5 million to that, you're going to be over $90 million.
Okay.
And we can't sign anything over $90 million without your authorization.
Okay. And that doesn't include the $2.5 million that we approved for the engineering?
That does not include the engineering contract.
So I have to ask, what other kind of things are floating around out there that are large? Like, when I say large, I mean anything over $100,000.
Other than, Darren, can you think of anything other than landscaping and paving? I can't, it doesn't come to mind. I'll have to look and see what's on the change sheet.
Okay.
We have it.
Yeah, but, okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Yep.
So I think certainly everything in this plant is itemized, and all the expenses are documented. Not only do we document them locally, but OWDA also receives reports, what, monthly?
Pretty much monthly.
Approximately monthly. And obviously, the plant is inspected, and at some point, it'll be turned over us for operation, which we expect to be October 1st. But along the way, along this travel to build this essentially $95 million water plant, we've experienced shipping delays internationally, COVID, tariffs. If anyone, setting a council, and I was one of them, people voted in favor of this plant being built, we knew that at some point, there would be additional costs. And so we initially estimated that at $90 million. It's going to exceed that, not significantly, but it's going to exceed that. But there's been a lot of things thrown at the City of Lancaster in this effort to build this plant that were not foreseen by anyone at any level of government operations, because worldwide, we've experienced things that just haven't happened before. The tariffs are new, and I can tell you, just on a water plant purchase order that came across in February, we had a cost of the item being at $2,500, and when it was repriced, a couple of months later, it was $4,000. That was attributed to tariff cost. So I assume the water plant is not immune from that, and that it's seen impact from tariff and cost on shipping and delays in shipping. Not saying that justifies all the additional expense, but it certainly explains some of the additional expense. So I'd take that into consideration.
Chairman, scoot over, may I?
Mm-hmm.
I appreciate the fact that tariffs exist and that we have had increases due to the pandemic, all of those things. My concern, and I believe some of the council members' concerns, lie in the fact we don't have a good picture of what you owe, meaning the department, what it owes in relation to debt service, and how it's proposing to pay for it. So in addition to a review of the contingencies, we would like a big picture of exactly what is owed, on what, and the payment schedules associated with that, and how we propose to pay it all back.
Okay. Like I said, I provided that to Councilman Wolfener in the spring.
He's not here.
So it's not unavailable. It's just Stephen's on vacation.
But I also think it needs updated because we have had additional expenses, and you're asking us to authorize additional expenses. So I think we need to, we need to update that.
That's bad.
I'm sitting here as a member of the committee, and I'm, we've discussed all of these things. The questions that you're asking, I feel that they've addressed them more than adequately at the committee meetings, and I don't understand why one of our members is asking these questions. And I feel like another thing that's happening, and if you come to the committee meeting, you hear these things, and maybe it's our fault for not reporting this, but I know I've heard this on the council floor before, that we rushed, we were rushed to get into this, and I feel like we made some mistakes very early that cost a lot of money. And so you're at $90 million. Do you quit? Are we quitting? Do we not finish? Is anyone suggesting that? I'm sure they're not, but I'm saying is, what I'm saying is, part of what's happened, happened because someone was in a hurry. Haste makes haste? I don't know. I grew up hearing that, and we did. And now we're paying for it. That's it.
All right. Real quick, because we're already like down the rabbit hole. Becky asked his questions on the floor, so everybody can hear him because the meetings are, the committee meetings, not too many people come, right? At the same time, you just had your Water Meeting, your committee meeting. Are the minutes out for that yet?
Mondays will be this week.
Okay.
The rest are hard, but last week's...
So some of us haven't, that, haven't been to that meeting, haven't seen those minutes. So that's the other reason that during Council last meeting, we started the kind of round the table, hey, what's going on in your committee? So I think although some of those are valid, we also have, we've asked for Denise to send some documents, which we should have before the next meeting, right?
I will try. Like I said, Stephen's on vacation.
It's available. You guys can make it happen. I'm confident you can make it happen. This is three readings, so we can have more of this discussion next time, once we all see the meeting minutes, we all see all of that. So I don't mean to be cutting everybody off to move on to the next piece, but clearly there's some contention here, and we can, that's why we do three readings, right? So we got a little time. Denise can get the stuff, we can look at it, we have another round of questions next time. And I have zero problem bringing it up in Finance next time if we need to, or we can wait until the regular meeting. Is everyone good with that? Okay. All right. You're staying up here for the next, it's like your meeting, you might as well just stay up there. So Temporary Resolution 7425, again, through Water, Water Pollution Control.
Yes, this piece authorizes the mayor to submit the loan application for the Frederick Street Sewer Separation Project that we've talked about previously, and that's up for construction next year, if I recall correctly. Is that correct, Denise?
Correct. This authorizes the mayor to submit a loan application to Ohio EPA for the Water Pollution Control Loan Fund. Frederick Street is, project is to install a storm sewer from Mount Pleasant to Fetter's Run. It's a project that was identified in the long-term control plan. So we are mandated by Ohio EPA to do this project. Stephen is choosing to fund part of it through a loan. That was one of the things he looked at when he did his rate study balancing debt versus cash. So this has been on the table for a loan, and the loan application is due in November. It's about a $3 million project.
Okay. Any questions on this? Seeing none, we'll move on to Temporary Resolution 7525. That is coming through Finance. That would be myself with the second of Ms. Bittler. And I'm going to defer this one to the auditor, please.
Thank you. Yes, this one is, we just received the second half special assessment from the Fairfield County Auditor's Office, and the crack crystal ball guess that I did this time last year for what's going to be collected for the downtown special improvement district in the special assessments. I was short by $8,312.11 in my guess, and we did receive the settlement just the end of last week, or, well, last week, and I need to get payment made to the SIDS, so they can have those monies that were collected. So this is just, I'm going ahead and cutting the check, throwing the account into the red, so they can have their money, so it'll be coming this week for them, but I just needed to get those monies budgeted that we received that I didn't anticipate last year.
Any questions? Is three readings okay?
It's council's pleasure. I'm fine with that.
Anybody? Okay. We'll stick with three unless some changes, okay? All right. Temporary Resolution 7625 through Water, Water Pollution Control. Mr. Wing?
Yes, I'll invite Denise back up. Oh, there you are. We've gone out to bid, we authorized going out to bid on the Lawrence Street Pump Station Replacement Project, and this authorizes the engineering contract.
Correct. Lawrence Street Pump Station sits across from the sanitation maintenance building. In fact, it was built to serve the sanitation maintenance building. It also serves South Ewing Street and the rest of sanitation, kind of down to Sugar Grove. It's at the end of its useful life, and we also have had several inquiries about extending the service area for that pump station to serve the JKB industrial site, instead of them having to go up to the road tracks and back around. So we did a request for qualifications for the project. We had three engineering firms submit. After the committee reviewed it, we selected Arcadis, and they have submitted a proposal for design, construction administration, and construction inspection services of $400,000.
What's the projected cost for the facility itself, construction cost?
We're looking, we're thinking at this point, because it hasn't been designed, that it's going to be roughly $4 to $5 million.
Any other questions? I just have one quick one. When you reference in the legislation, the committee that picked Arcadis, can you, I'm sure I've heard this before, but who's the committee that selects out of your qualified?
So when we do a request for qualifications, we, we have a group review, and it was Stephen and myself and Curtis with them.
All right. Any other questions? So that is three readings with Mr. Hales.
I'm assuming we're taking out bonds for this?
At this point, we anticipate paying cash for this one.
Pay cash, okay.
All right. So I have three readings with Mr. Hales as your second. Michael?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. All right. Temporary Resolution 77.
Yes. This authorizes the mayor to enter, or to submit a state capital grant application for the replacement of the Tiki Water Line, of the Water Line on Tiki Lane.
This is an annual piece. Every year, the city can submit up to two applications to the Ohio Public Works Commission, and Curt and Utilities alternate on who gets the number one, because we did not submit a number two last year. Curt submitted for River Valley Drive, so it's our turn this year. We're submitting the Tiki Lane Water Line Replacement. This is from Sheridan to Monmouth. It's to replace the line that has suffered several leaks, several big leaks. We anticipate, this is currently out for design. The application is due the 1st of October, and this is just a requirement of the application.
Okay. Any questions? Seeing none, I have Ms. Teener as your second?
That's correct. Three readings. Do three readings.
Okay. All right. Any other resolutions we need to discuss? No? New ordinances, starting with Temporary Ordinance 4025. It's coming through Code Enforcement and Zoning. Mr. Sully?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This ordinance is to accept the final plat for the Taylor Commercial Subdivision, and I'm going to invite our city planner, Chaslin, to come up and talk about this.
Good evening, everyone. This is the final plat for the Taylor Subdivision. Just a kind of a brief overview, this, if you're not familiar, the property is west of Edie Road between Memorial Drive and Columbus Street. The plat that you should have with your packet outlies easements, it outlies infrastructure. You will notice that across Lot 2 and 3, there is an access easement for ingress and egress of the, for the general public. This easement is considered a private easement, and it's to be maintained open and in good repair by the owners of lots 2 and 3. This easement is not a public road maintained by the city. Becker Way is the public road. It is built between lots 2 and 3, and it'll be extending from Memorial Drive to North Columbus Street. It's just kind of a brief layout of what is shown on the plat. And then we do have the CASA team and Mr. Taylor here, if they would like, if you would like to hear from them.
Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have one question for you, Chaslin. Those easements that you described in Becker, those are meant to accommodate the traffic that you could potentially see, right? I've had some constituents reach out to me on that, and I just want to confirm that detail with you.
Yes, there was a traffic impact study, and the engineering team looked at that, and this was what they have came up with to kind of ease that impact.
All right. Thank you so much.
A quick question. I think we're all aware of what's happened down around the mall with that private drive, right? What do we have in place to protect the city that'll make sure that these are maintained in good working order, since they're going to be privately maintained?
So it is, this is laid out on the plat that, Stephanie, I don't know if you want to pitch in, but it is laid out on the plat, who would be maintaining these private areas.
Yes, she's correct. We fixed language in our plats to make sure that the city is no longer responsible for private easements. Becker Way will actually be dedicated, though, as a public road eventually between lots 1 and 2. So it will be built to city standards initially, and the city engineer and L.D.O. are responsible for making sure that happens. But once it's dedicated to us, then at that point, it's ours. The private easement, though, will be the responsibility of the property owner, and they could make an arrangement with the person who leases the property, but regardless, it will not be the City of Lancaster maintaining that easement.
And we have no authority over making sure they do maintain it, right?
Um, we have some authority. Essentially, yes, we could file a civil suit if necessary, but it shouldn't come to that because it's in the plat.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No, I have one, and I'm, I even have contacts in, and I'm, so that easement you're speaking of that goes through 2 and 3, does it pop out for access on Edie and on Columbus? Hello? Is that what I'm seeing?
Yeah, so from, I believe, it goes from Edie across, but it would go to Becker, like from Edie to Becker.
So anyone can turn into Lot 3 from Edie Road?
Correct.
So I know there was discussion a while ago about, so if you're coming onto Edie from Memorial, turning left onto that access, is that what we're looking at? They're going to be able to turn left?
From Memorial, or?
No, they're turning onto Edie from Memorial?
Left from Edie, yeah.
And then being able to turn left on Becker as opposed to going up to the light at Columbus?
Oh, wait. I think I'm confused about what you're asking. So they're turning...
No. So there's an access road that comes out onto Edie?
There is an access road.
It's an access easement for public use.
Yes, yes. Yes, it's an access easement for public use, so yes.
So they'll be able to turn left from Edie Road?
Yes, it's my understanding that the traffic impact study looked at that, and whatever they decided in terms of them and the engineer is how it'll operate, yeah.
All right. Does that make sense, what I said to the rest of you?
No, it does.
It was just like, I feel like two years ago, when we first talked about it, that was something we were having a conversation about, so.
So you're concerned with traffic backing up from there onto 33?
Yeah.
I get you, because that Edie Road gets backed up.
Because we had just widened it and fixed the backing up onto Edie all the way to Columbus, and now if someone wants to turn left in there, but I guess you see that, you're talking about the traffic, say, most people that are coming onto Edie from Memorial end up getting in the right lane and turning right onto Columbus, so I get it. Okay.
Couple questions. So just to clarify, which lot is the Chick-fil-A going to be in? Because that's, that really, really, I mean, when we're talking about cars turning and things.
Just follow the traffic line. That's what you would just be...
The reason I ask is, where, how is this going to pile up? I mean, I don't know if you've driven by a busy Chick-fil-A and watched their drive-through. I mean, it's an incredible process, how they do it. I mean, it's amazing, but I don't want to see that spilling out onto 33. That would be a problem.
So they will be intended for Lot 3.
Everybody will be so excited, just like White Castle. When White Castle opened, you remember that traffic nightmare for like six months?
Oh, yeah.
So, but I am concerned, though, that, what you're talking about, there is access too from 33, I see here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is Becker Way only going to be accessible from northbound traffic, or can incoming traffic into town turn left across 33 and onto Becker?
So there will be a, you can turn left, but you won't be able to come out Becker and turn left to get onto Memorial, yeah.
But you can turn left coming towards town on Becker, or on 33, onto Becker. But you can turn left coming towards town on Becker, or on 33, on to Becker?
Yes.
Okay.
So left in, right out. Okay. All right. Everybody get it? Cool.
I have another question.
Yes.
What is the urgency for suspension?
There has been some delays in getting this project started. And Chick-fil-A has, they kind of do a fall schedule. I don't know if someone can explain this a little better than I, but they have a fall schedule, a spring schedule that they plan all of their openings on. Yes. So they're, since the delays and working out the infrastructure and everything that's happening for the development, they're kind of getting behind on that schedule. They still want to be able to get some paving done, get some work done this season.
You didn't see their construction of stores in the news today? Like, it's coming. Any other questions?
And then they can't move on that until the final plat has been approved.
Yes, please.
Eric from Casto?
Yep.
Good evening, thank you, Chaslin. Good evening. My name is Eric Liebowitz with Casto here on behalf of the Casto team and Taylor. Thank you again for the opportunity to be here. I'll be, I'll be brief. Just to touch on the traffic question, as Chaslin and Stephanie alluded to, that was all vetted and approved as part of the traffic study. The idea with the construction of Becker Way and the private access drive was to make sure that the flow of traffic was safe, efficient, and taking into account who the tenant was. So the site plan, all of that has been very carefully vetted and planned. The traffic study has been looked at a number of times, and that has been approved by the city engineer's office. The, in terms of the urgency and the need for suspension, as Chaslin has referred to, there's a number of delays. This project, in terms of getting it going, is a developer-funded public road and is in, being completed in complement to the safety project, which obviously opened a few years ago. And so the idea is to try and get the public road, Becker Way, finished in time for the Chick-fil-A opening. And so the timing with paving and getting that done before plants close and everything else in advance of the planned opening. So there's some construction timing that fits into that. So there's, making sure that we meet the city specs in terms of delivery. And the city staff has been fantastic in getting to that process. It has been a long time coming, so happy to answer any other questions, but we're very appreciative of the time tonight. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all right. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Moving on, temporary ordinance 4125, coming through water, water pollution. Mr. Wing?
So this is an update to the city's wastewater rates. And it is the subject of a presentation during the regular meeting. And if you're all right with that, Mr. Chairman, we can have discussion and questions during the presentation.
Everybody okay with that? Denise, you're okay with that? Yeah? We don't have to kill it twice? Okay. All right. I have three readings. Mr. Ailes is your second.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. And now it turns into the Law Committee show. Temporary ordinance 4225, coming through Law Committee. Ms. Kreitz.
Yes, thank you. 4225 and 4325 are related. 4225 is to repeal part of the zoning code, and 4325 is to amend part of the parking code. Both are related to the commercial vehicle parking. And after the update to the zoning code in 2023, there resulted a conflict with that parking code that wasn't realized until some recent parking issues over in the Parkland Drive area. Because of some safety concerns with school buses, pickup, drop-off, things like that, we want, the administration would like to repeal the zoning code, keep the parking code with some updates. And then also, we need suspension because right now, they cannot enforce either code because of the conflict. So we need to clean it up, and then that way they can enforce the code as well. Law Director Hall or Service Safety Director Woody or Mayor, would you like to add anything to that?
I don't. That was perfect. Thank you.
Very welcome.
Agreed.
So it will be a suspension, and I have Ms. Bitler and Mr. Bizjack, respectively.
All right. Any questions on those?
I have one question. So just to be clear, the zoning code that we're repealing, that will be addressed later?
That was part of, so that is the conflict piece to the parking code?
Yeah, so that's being eliminated.
Just that part.
Correct. And then I spoke with Councilman Sully earlier. I explained to him that he's the chair of the Code Enforcement and Zoning Committee, and I didn't want to step on his toes and just make something up. So we're sending it back to his committee, and he's more than happy to work with the members of his committee and determine what you'd like to see moving forward with regard to the zoning code aspect of it.
Okay. Thanks, Stephanie.
Yep. And I apologize, I didn't catch. If you were speaking to 43 at the same time, I do want to make everybody aware that the mayor indicated some of you took issue with the 14,000-pound weight. First of all, I will say that I have no idea what a vehicle weighs, period. I don't know the difference between GVWR and payload. I have no clue what any of these mean. The goal was to fit any residential, or any, any personal vehicle essentially into a residential neighborhood. So some folks drive F-350s. Michael Wing's got some kind of monster. He likes to park on the street. You know, these big things. We just wanted to make sure that if it was a, a resident who lives on that street, that they would have the ability to park their personal vehicle on the street where they live, right? But the mayor indicated some people thought 14,000, which was the initial that's in your packet, was too high. So we moved that back to 10,000 GVWR. That means anything to you? That, that's what it is now. The goal was to, I think, have smaller vehicles rather than something that could fit into the 14,000 range. So I'll let him address if he wants to.
10,000 is equivalent to a one-ton non-commercial vehicle. 14,000 is a box truck, which we currently do not allow on city streets. So we would be allowing a much larger vehicle that would possibly obscure traffic control devices and certainly take up more space. The idea of moving this from what was a three-quarter ton pickup to one ton was because one ton has become a pretty standard non-commercial pickup truck. And we, we didn't want to make a person's, person's personal vehicle illegal to be parked in the residential area. But we also don't want box trucks parked on every block in the city either. So that's why.
Corey.
The recommendation. Larry?
I provided pictures to.
He did provide pictures.
Trucks that would qualify under, and, and there were box trucks and stick trucks and a tow truck and many vehicles that I know we, we did not intend to allow park on the street, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
I just have one clarification, please. So under 4325 in 35116, the packet I have tonight says nothing over 14,001. Is that, should that be 10,000, is what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am. I, I walked in a piece with just that change, like I described. Yeah, I gave it to the clerk. I apologize. The preamble didn't change at all, so we don't have to, you know, do any more readings or change anything else. Just the number. Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Turn to Becky.
I just have a question, unless I'm totally missing. I've read through this, and I can't remember, but can they park like the box truck or the bigger truck in, in like their driveway off the street?
Yes.
Okay.
Currently, yes.
Yes.
Yes, but.
That'd be a zoning issue.
Exactly. Yep. They'll take it up.
Any other questions on those?
So we'll have a star version, is that it?
No.
No.
Okay, we don't need.
Because we didn't read it.
Okay, good.
I just thought we should clarify in case anybody was thinking about this, that if somebody's actually making a delivery or they're temporary out there, you know, you get like a landscape crew or somebody is there, you know, obviously to cut the lawn.
There's exceptions in the ordinance.
They're not going to get ticketed.
Correct.
While they're working and, you know, we're going to use common sense here.
Loading, unloading, and actually working from the vehicle is excluded.
I just wanted to point that out.
All right, thank you. 4425, again, coming through Law Committee. Ms. Kreitz?
Yes. We had legislation passed in 2024 regarding a moratorium that was placed on adult-use cannabis dispensaries within the city. And we were required to revisit that before January 1st, 2026. The Law Committee did revisit that, which included a presentation from a dispensary company. And after discussion, because the state legislation remains pending, and without that legislation is unclear whether the city's primary benefit of having a dispensary, which is additional tax revenue, would even come to fruition. Therefore, the Law Committee is recommending that we extend the moratorium for at least two years and revisit that honor before January 1st, 2028, with the next Council and Law Committee. Hopefully, the legislation at the state level has, you know, finalized by then.
Questions? Comments? Concerns? Seeing none. Moving on to 4525, also through the Law Committee. Ms. Kreitz?
Yes. This one is, because the city's improvements inspections are handled by multiple inspectors in different areas and departments, the current process includes delays. Between interdepartment communications and handoffs, the city wants to allocate all of these fees into a single fund and use those fees for a single inspector who will cover all inspections. The city has a qualified FTE, and if it did not, this structure could allow for them to use a single contractor. Service Safety Director, Mayor, would you like to add to that?
Again, I think you summed it up very nicely. I think that Mayor and I have been working on trying to improve efficiencies within the city and improve our customer service, and this is just one of those measures that we think will help in both, reach both of those goals.
Thank you. Mr. Bizjack will be my second, and it's three readings.
Okay. Any questions? That is it for ordinances. I am open for department updates if we have any. Nobody. I'm okay with that. Mr. President, Council Meeting, Brad?
Thank you, Chairman Schoonover. As you alluded to, we do have a presentation tonight from our environmental engineer regarding wastewater rates. And we also have a presentation from Lancaster City Parks Superintendent Steve Gayfield.
Great. Thank you very much. Any other items for finance? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So motion.
Mr. Sully, we are adjourned at 6:42.
The regular session of Lancaster City Council will begin promptly at 6:50.
The Frankie Smith Funeral Home and Crematory in Lancaster and the Johnson Smith Funeral Home in Baltimore have a long and wonderful history of serving our community. Feel free to give us a call at 740-653-0652. Stop in and see us at either of our two locations, 405 North Columbus Street in Lancaster and 207 South Main Street in Baltimore. Respect for tradition, regard for change.
Hi, this is Jill Hinwood with the Victoria Players Children's Theater in Baltimore. We are currently in our eighth season, thanks to local support. This month, we are really excited to be chosen as a recipient of the Buckeye Cares program. That means Buckeye will make a generous donation to help our efforts with every vehicle they sell this month. From all of us at Victoria Players Children's Theater, we say, thank you, Buckeye.
God grant us the serenity to accept the things that we cannot change, the courage to change the things we can, and finally, the wisdom to know the difference. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Now call the August 25th, 2025 Lancaster City Council meeting to order. And also remind all council members at this time, please turn on your mics for purposes of the meeting. Please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes.
Here.
Mrs. Bitler.
Here.
Mr. Bizjack.
Here.
Mrs. Kreitz.
Here.
Mrs. Hoop.
Here.
Mr. Locknerberg.
Here.
Mr. Schoonover.
Here.
Mr. Sully.
Here.
Ms. Teener.
Here.
And Mr. Wayne.
Here.
Let the record reflect all 10 members of Lancaster City Council are present. Reading and disposing of the journal.
I have regular meeting minutes dated July 14th, 2025.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the journal.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to receive and file the journal. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Reports of city officials.
I have nine of them. Email dated August 13th, 2025 regarding July 25 revenue reports submitted by Tax Commissioner Amy Hamilton. Email dated August 18th, 2025 regarding cybersecurity training submitted by Council Member Kreitz. Email dated August 18th, 2025 regarding Taylor final plot submitted by City Planner Chaslin Carter. Series of emails dated August 18th through the 24th, 2025 regarding wastewater rate studies submitted by Law Director Stephanie Hall and Environmental Engineer Denise Cruz. Email dated August 21st, 2025 regarding September Public Works Meeting submitted by Council Member Becky Teener. Email dated August 24th, 2025 regarding explanations on temporary resolutions 73-25 and 74-25 submitted by Environmental Engineer Denise Cruz. Email dated August 24th, 2025 regarding explanations on temporary resolutions 76-25 and 77-25 submitted by Environmental Engineer Denise Cruz. Email dated August 24th, 2025 regarding explanations on temporary ordinance 41-25 submitted by Environmental Engineer Denise Cruz. And finally, email dated August 25th, 2025 for zoning changes for short-term rentals submitted by Council Member Elena Hoop.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of city officials.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to receive and file the reports of city officials. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. We now move on to communications.
I have mail received August 13th, 2025 regarding multifamily homes submitted by Sycamore Ridge Lancaster and Affordable Housing Development. Email dated August 14th, 2025 regarding purchase order data. Public records requests submitted by Hamady Camnea with the Data Branch Research Team. Email dated August 15th, 2025 regarding purchase order data. Public records requests submitted by Wu Park with the Data Branch Research Team. Series of emails dated August 15th through the 25th, 2025 regarding FOIA requests for Hunter's Hill 587 Elizabeth Drive Lancaster submitted by Bree Pollin with AEI Consultants. Email received August 18th, 2025 September guest speaker submitted by Tracy Thompson, President of Lancaster Fairfield County Landlord Association. Mail dated August 19th, 2025 regarding multifamily funding programs submitted by Viviera Fairfield and Marion Development Group.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the communications.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to receive and file the communications. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. We now move on to the portion of our meeting for special presentations, beginning with our first special presentation this evening from the Lancaster City Parks Superintendent Steve Gayfield.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to come speak to you tonight and give you an update on what the parks have been working on. I'd like to focus on three areas, our personnel, our programs, and our projects. Projects are probably the ones that you'll have the most questions about, but I wanted to give you information on the rest of that also. Over the last year, we had a wave of retirements, some expected, some not expected, so we have been understaffed until just recently. We, if you weren't aware of it, Jennifer Shamblin, who's been functioning as the Recreation Supervisor of the Department, was recently promoted to be the Assistant Superintendent. She is still going to operate Recreation, but she's providing assistance to me with some administrative tasks, and she's also taking over some projects. One of them is going to be Elmwood Park, which I'll talk about here shortly. We also are in the process of finishing the hiring of a new Parks Facility Supervisor. I expect him to start sometime in the middle of September, and with that, we'll be back to full staff. So, we can hopefully start catching up on some of the things we've not addressed as well as we normally do. Programs, while it's been a wet year, we did successfully operate and navigate through our spring and summertime program schedule. Some of the highlights, I won't cover all of it because you all have a big agenda, I see. First, spring soccer had 646 Lancaster residents in that youth soccer program, 120 teams total because we play with some other teams throughout the county also and other communities. Spring flag football had 108 Lancaster residents in it and 23 teams total, again, playing with teams from communities within the county. Adult kickball, which I believe the city staff had a team, and I believe maybe the Service Safety Director and the auditor play also. Oh, yes, Janitra played. We had seven teams in that, and we continue to see that grow. The pools this year, while it wasn't a great year for the pools, especially early in the season because it was so cool and rainy, we did have at Tiki over daily visits, we had 14,225 people over two and a half months. At Miller, we had 7,078 for a total of over 21,000 daily visits in two pools over two and a half months. That's a large number for a community this size, so the pools are being very well used. And now we're continuing with our fall programs. Soccer's taken off, flag football's taken off again. We had a cornhole tournament this last weekend downtown, so you'll continue to see those and the special events that are coming up. So, that kind of covers programs. For projects, I wanted to talk about some of the larger projects. We had several small projects, but the ones we've completed as far as larger projects was Tiki Pool. The slide needed to be re-gelcoated. You have to do that periodically. The slide is nearing end of life, but by re-gelcoating it, we can continue to use it for some. We'll keep maintaining it as long as we can, let's put it that way. It was a $21,000 or $22,000 project. Olive Dale Roof, last year, the Olive Dale Seniors actually paid for half of the roof to be installed. The agreement was we would pay for the other half, so this year, we did Phase Two. The roof was installed. We estimated the work at around $60,000. The total was $56,927 and some change. And the good news was with the Olive Dale Seniors went out and found a grant, and they actually paid $30,000 of that. So, we saved a considerable amount of money by utilizing our partnership with the Olive Dale Seniors. They really stepped up and helped us out this year, so I wanted to say thank you to them. Finally, if you didn't know, we did do some stormwater improvements at Rising Park. That was completed here recently. If you remember, if you've ever been in Rising Park, after heavy rains, the basin down by the pond, the large pond, would normally flood and hold water. The good news is the stormwater improvements were done before the flooding that affected so many people so badly in the community. And the very next day, there was some water there, but it was not poned like I didn't. I expected the whole area to be full of water, and there was a little bit around one of the trees. So, thanks to the engineering department, specifically Jeff Baird and Kurt Schon for helping out with that, because it is going to allow us to move forward with paving the rest of the park. It didn't make sense to pave the road when the drainage wasn't fixed first, because you have to dig up the road to fix the drainage, so we took care of that. And now we'll move forward with more paving at Rising. Finally, projects, large projects that are in process, I mentioned Elmwood Park improvements. That's a $225,000 project that was a grant received from the state. It is a playground replacement, and Jen Shamblin is going to take that on, and that's become her project. I started it. It's going to be her opportunity to become a project manager. We started this spring by removing the old tennis courts, which were not repairable and were in terrible shape. So, we removed them, we seeded it, we probably need to do a bit more grading to make it level, because the idea is to turn that into green space so that the youth sports teams have another place to practice, because they're always looking for a place. So, that part of it is done. Currently, we have a playground that's going to go in over there that's the rest of the project. We actually had some, we had kids vote on several designs. They chose one. Actually, this Wednesday at 6 o'clock, Jen is going to be over at Elmwood Park. We contacted the neighbors to let them come look at the design so they can see what we're going to put in and if they have any questions or anything they can ask us at that point. So, that is moving forward. We expect to order the playground and have it installed this fall. The Future Bowers Park, which I have been asked several questions about, the fall work started a few weeks ago, I believe you all heard that from the Ohio Operating Engineers. They have completed the final grade and returned topsoil to one field. So, that field is ready for us to actually grass seed, put ball field, infield dirt on, and potentially put in backstops this fall. They have started on doing the same thing on a second field, so that's what we, that's what they told us they would complete this year was two fields. So, the two backfields are finishing the topsoil and grading there, and then when that's done, again, we expect to be able to put grass seed, infield dirt, and hopefully backstops up on that. Obviously, those fields have to grow in. There's no water in that park, so we can't water the grass seed, so we have to get the outfields established by letting God rain on it, to be honest. So, we'll get them as playable as quickly as we can. The good news is, is they actually have already started on the subgrade and the layout of a third field, so three of the four fields are going in right now. They may, depending on weather, be able to complete that third field this fall also. If it rains a lot, they won't be able to do it. You can't move topsoil when it's soaking wet. That was one of the holeups this spring when they didn't come out and work. So, with that, that means the park staff is working on seeding the outfields. We're getting all the information together. We're going to do it this fall. We're working on the infields. We are going to put some drainage in the infields. The plans that were developed for the park did not include drainage on the infields. We feel that is a mistake, so we're going to put it in ourselves, because while those fields should drain well the way they're graded, we would prefer to be, better be safe than sorry, so they're playable more often. And then finally, just to, if we need to speed the process up, I'm meeting with two LMN, which was the design architect for the park tomorrow. We're going to do a walkthrough to see where the progress is, and they are preparing a proposal if we decide to move forward with hiring a contractor to speed the project up. So, that's where Bowers Park stands as of tomorrow when I meet with the architects. And then finally, just to give you a heads up on what I call the reimagined Miller Park, obviously, we have to wait for the water plant to be completed before we can get too far into it. But we did put out an RFQ, request for qualifications for architects to take our concept design that's been out for a couple of months now and move that into full construction documents, biddable documents, all of that information. That closed Friday. We did receive, did receive one, and we're in the process of putting together a committee, kind of like Denise did with her RFQ of city staff to review that and make a recommendation. So, that is in place. And then also, with Miller and Tiki both, we did decide to go ahead and do a pool assessment, because one of the big questions that is coming out of Miller Park is what's going to happen to the pool. Well, we did hire a firm to come in, and we're going to, they're actually, this Thursday, we're having a meeting with them where they're going to present their assessments of the current status of the pool, give us some ideas of both Tiki and Miller, give us some ideas of what we could and could not do with them, and then actually move forward from there and to doing public input on what people would like to see and what, you know, doing some of that more public outreach work to see what people are looking for, especially the residents in town. With that, those are kind of my updates. I don't want to take up too much of your time. I'd entertain any questions you might have.
Thank you, Superintendent. Questions from council? Councilmember Bizjack?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just on the subject of Bowers Park, what is your, at this point, with everything going on, and I appreciate the update very much, because I've had a few constituents reach out to me about the ballparks as well, but what is your estimated total timeline to complete, you know, till completion for the park? I know you provided for the first three, but I'm just curious, what's estimate? And I'm emphasizing the estimate part itself.
If we stick to the course that was started many, five, six years ago at this point with Ohio Operating Engineers, they will get those fields in this year, two fields. We should be able to get at least the grass seed and the infield dirt on it. With the ball field, infield dirt, longer, to be honest, the longer it sits, the better it is, but obviously, you can't do that. People need their fields. If the grass seed comes in, we could potentially have two fields, depending on if we get road and drainage finished. We would have two fields sometime next year. What they had told us when we talked to them last year and we planned this was they could do two fields this year, complete the last two next year, and then we would do the same thing that we're doing this fall. We go in and seed them, put the infield dirt on, put the backstops up. I would expect fields at that point to be playable 2027. That's if we continue on the route we're going. Using Ohio Operating Engineers saved us approximately, if you, the engineer's estimate from two years ago was just around $600,000 for all the grading and the roadwork and that they're doing. So, if we move forward with a contractor and we bid it and go that, it'll obviously go faster, and I can't give you a timeline for that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from council members? Councilmember Teener.
Elmwood Park, I really appreciate you guys doing something over there, because it's needed. I used to play tennis over there years ago, but everybody's okay with that, the neighbors, everybody's okay with what you're doing over there?
Yeah, we have not had any negative feedback.
Because that would be a really nice park. That, I mean, it's really needed. And I really appreciate with the Olive Dale thing that they're pitching in and helping out and doing things, because they really do need to do that. And anything about skate park, is that going to be in the plans of this thing that you're talking about over by Miller?
Sure. The first, the RFQ that went out was for Phase One, which is basically what we have funding for. Skate Park is going to be part of the future phases. It's not part of the design right now.
Where will that, do they think it might be?
I'm, we're thinking that it's probably going to move over to the other side of the river, over by the old, what we call the community building, the Old Sherman School, by the football field there. The whole, the whole concept plan includes additional parking, pedestrian bridge so you can cross the river, all of that. That's all part of the plans for that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilmember Ailes?
Yes. The letter that we received from Judy Edwards, one of her concerns was the appearance of there are piles of gravel and all kinds of things at Bowers Park. Is any of that going to be taken care of this fall or?
Well, the actual, the big pile of dirt that I've asked about quite a bit, that's actually the topsoil. They removed the topsoil to do the grading, and that's the topsoil they're putting back on. So, some of that will be gone. It already is, if you go arrive out there and look.
I'm talking about the other pile.
The other pile, the grindings.
The taller pile.
Yeah, that's the grindings. That is intended for the roadway going in, so that probably won't be gone this fall. I mean, I would expect them to not want to put that down until they get the construction equipment and get the fields actually put in place, and then put that in to make the roadway to go in.
What time are you meeting tomorrow?
10:30, I believe.
Okay. Thank you.
And I will, I'll send you an email and verify that.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council members? Seeing none. Thank you for your presentation tonight, Superintendent.
Again, thank you for the opportunity. Have a great night.
Our second presentation is a rate study presentation provided by our environmental engineer Denise Cruz. Do we need lights off for this, for the back?
We will see.
We will.
Yeah, I think she's got it on now. I always do this. I'm sorry.
You're good.
So, first of all, I got voted to do the presentation because I talk faster and can condense it down. But Darren Drum and Curtis Witham are here, and they're going to come up to help answer questions when I'm through all of this. So, this tonight is the 2025 rate study update. We did a rate study in 2022, and normally, we do rate studies for five years. And we based that rate study on what we projected as industrial flows, what we had been led to believe. In that study, we adjusted rates among the various classes. We adjusted the capacity fees, and we recommended rate increases for '23, '24, '25, '26, and '27. And those were adopted, wastewater rates were adopted by council, water rates were adopted by the Service Safety Director. In the meantime, industrial flows did not increase as much as predicted, so we got a little nervous. Project cost increased due to all those things the mayor's talked about, inflation, labor costs, supply chain, time delays. We also had additional EPA regulations, including lead copper, asset management, risk assessment, and increased sampling requirements. And this is kind of never-ending. We were in a call this morning with Ohio EPA, and they want to reopen the Long-Term Control Plan and look at what the next phase on that might be. So, looking at all of those things, as I said, we got nervous in water and water pollution, decided that maybe we needed to go in and take a look at this midterm, so we didn't get a surprise at the very end, and we could make gradual rate adjustments. I did send you the redacted rate study. It was redacted in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code. If you've got questions on something that was redacted, let us know, and we can talk you through that. So, what the 2025 rate study found on the wastewater side, which is what's before you tonight at council, was a, we were in good shape. What we predicted would work at 3%, 3%. For '26 and '27, we extended it two more years, because we're two more years into a five-year rate study. So, that projected out. So, that worked out fine. On the water side, what we found was, even with the recommended rate adjustments, we were going to be short, and a lot of that was due to the fact that Division of Water was requesting $2 million for asset management preventative maintenance projects. We are just so behind on things. We went for years without rate increases. We went for years saying if we can just get the South Water Plant paid off, we can put money into the system. And when we paid off the South Water Plant, we started on the North Water Plant. So, Division Water has a huge backlog. They requested $2 million a year. So, this would be what it would look like. Then we talked about the philosophy of water charges, and there's basically three philosophies. They're all valid, depending on what you want to do. The first philosophy is what we currently have, which is a declining rate. Under declining rate system, a larger portion of the cost is pushed down on the lower water users, and we, the larger water users get a break on each 100 cubic feet of water that they use. In a declining water rate, it's done to encourage big water users to locate. Well, guess what? We got our big water user. Flatrate communities are communities that basically their philosophy is a gallon of water is a gallon of water, and it doesn't matter if it's going to your house, or if it's going to the hospital, or if it's going to an industrial user. A gallon of water costs what a gallon of water costs. Then there are a few communities that have increasing rates. These communities tend to want to conserve their water capacity, so they tend to want to have smaller users or encourage water conservation. So, we looked at us being a declining rate community and said, well, what if we go to a flat rate? we go to a flat rate? We've been a declining rate community for about 10 years. So if we would go to and phase out our declining rates, this is what the rating, rates would look like. And as you can see, in '26, we're starting to bump up those higher water users. And then in '27, everyone will be paying the same. So we did a phase into this. So on the water side, this is what it would look for a residential user. The rates actually come down. In '26, we're proposing a residential user will not see a rate increase. In 2027, they'll see a 3.8% rate increase. And then '28, '29, instead of an 8%, they'll see a 7.4% rate increase. This will all generate the same amount of money that we needed and identified in the rate study. On the wastewater side, there is a small increase in '26, 66 cents a month. That has to do with the base rate, not the per gallon usage. And that goes 1.8 in '27 and 2.9 in '28 and '29. So again, under the, the 3% that we initially predicted. Just as a comparison, because somebody asked me, these are some surrounding communities. I included Delco and Delaware County because they serve the developed area around Delaware. The city of developed, city of Delaware does not serve all that development up there. It's the county and Delco. So you can see, yes, our rates are higher, not as high as Ainsville, but higher. Newark is currently undergoing a rate study because they desperately need improvements in their plants. So we expect Newark's will come up closer to what we're seeing once they get the rate study done. So the next step, sewer rates are set by city council. You have the legislature before you. The current rates already include a 3% for '26 and '27. We're proposing to take those back and put the new rates in. And add '28 and '29, which is not currently in the legislation, in the ordinance. Water rates, I want to make clear, are set by the Service Safety Director, not by city council. So we're providing you this information tonight, just so you know what's going on and you can see the big picture. We made this presentation to our committee in May. We've submitted it tonight for three readings, so we, if you pass it, it will become effective September 22nd and the new rates will go into effect January 1st. And that's what I have. If anybody has some questions, I'm going to let the guys come up.
Questions from council members?
Why don't you all think, I thought I'd take the opportunity to introduce myself. I'm Curtis Witham. I haven't been here too long. I've been up here once, but I'm the superintendent of Water Pollution Control and have to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Councilmember Bitler.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a couple of questions basically that are related to non-metered accounts.
Yes.
So how many non-metered residential accounts do we have?
Only a handful, and I'm going to say less than 100. They're mainly the county subdivisions around the city that we serve. And I can't even tell you what they are right now.
That's okay.
But, but because we don't provide water, they're charged a non-meter and, and we assume five, I think, five units.
Per, per home?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then the other question is, there's discussion, and I, I don't think this is new. Water used and not measured by a water meter, and this I believe is for the industrials, they can meter themselves, correct? And, but how are we, how are we getting readings from those that are self-measuring?
That are self-measuring? So if they have a sewer meter, those are read by?
So we are reading their meters?
We are reading them, yes.
Thank you very much.
And I should say that we still have the summer average meter.
Right.
Reading. So for people that, that use water to, to water their lawns and, and things like that, on the wastewater side, they do an average. So summer usage is, is kind of evened out based on their winter usage. And you find the information on that on the webpage. If you've got questions.
Thank you, Denise. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, council member. Any other questions? I guess we'll come back to earlier this evening when we were having the presentation about the, the water plant, the North Water Plant. I think it's imperative that council and also the community knows, you know, what our plan is, what, what, what is our debt service, what are our rates, what's our income, and how are we paying for it and making sure that we're doing everything that we need to do to address our future needs and the needs that we're doing now. So if we could get that information, we'd be very appreciative.
I'll be glad to provide a summary, but that was all spelled out in the rate study. We projected those capital plans and our debt services.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that it's in the rate study, that, what you're doing. The debt's not. So I think what we need to see is it all in one place, all, all in a very easy to understand format for folks here.
Yep. Debt service is included in the rate study.
Okay.
But yeah, I'll be glad to provide it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Petitions and memorials?
There are none this evening.
Thank you. We've now reached the time for permission of voters and taxpayers to address council. The process is a three-minute opportunity to address council. You must approach the podium, sign your name, address, and on the provided clipboard. Is there anybody here this evening who would like to take this opportunity to address Lancaster City Council? Seeing none, we thank you for your attendance this evening. Reports of standing committees?
I have two. Water Water Pollution Committee Agenda dated August 16, 2025, submitted by Mr. Wing. Finance Committee Agenda dated August 25, 2025, submitted by Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of standing committees.
Second. We have a motion and a second to receive and file the reports of standing committees. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Reports of special committees?
I have none.
We have no reports from special committees. We don't have a public hearing. We're going to move on to the reading of resolutions, beginning with the third reading of Temporary Resolution 6525.
A resolution to appropriate from the unincumbered balance and amend the certificate of appropriations with the county auditor in the city income tax fund 2016 to accommodate increased refunds in 2025 and to pay to replace the backup sewer server, my mind's on water, for the income tax department for the cloud-based system. This is through Finance Committee, Mr. Schoonover, Mr. Sully.
Councilmember Schoonover.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and grows center upon the written record Temporary Resolution 6525.
Second. We have a motion and a second to pass and grows and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 6525. Any discussion, Councilmember Schoonover?
I have none.
Thank you. Hearing no further discussion, please call the rule.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mrs. Bitler?
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Lochtenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Sully?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
And Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 6525 passes 10 to 0. We'll now move on to second reading, beginning with Temporary Resolution 6725.
A resolution authorizing the city administration to act on behalf of, of the city of Lancaster to enter into any and all agreements or settlements necessary to participate in the new national opioid settlements with the Alvogan Inc., Amneal Pharmaceuticals Inc., Apotax Inc., Hickamite Pharmaceuticals USA Inc., and Divior Inc., Mylan Pharmaceuticals Inc., Sun Pharmaceutical Industries Inc., and Zitis Pharmaceuticals USA Inc., and to declare an emergency.
Yay.
I practiced that one.
Get to do it again, though.
Yeah, one more time.
It's just like you're reading.
I was proud of myself. Oh, I'm sorry. This is the Law Committee, Mrs. Kreitz and Mr. Bizjack.
Councilmember Kreitz.
Yes, thank you. Second of three readings.
Second of three readings on Temporary Resolution 6725. Temporary Resolution 7025.
A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into an engineering agreement for updating the Division of Water Asset Management Plan as required by the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency and Ohio Water Development Authority. Through Water Water Pollution Control Committee, Mr. Wing and Ms. Teener.
Councilmember Wing.
Yes, this is the second of three readings.
Second of three readings on Temporary Resolution 70-25. Temporary Resolution 7125.
A resolution to authorize the Service Safety Director to advertise for a request for qualifications and issue a request for proposals for a design professional for design and construction administration of the Edie Road Fire Station project and to declare an emergency. This is through Safety Committee, Mr. Bizjack and Mr. Sully.
Councilmember Bizjack.
Thank you, Mr. President. This will be the second of three readings.
Second of three readings on Temporary Resolution 7125. Temporary Resolution, we're moving to first reading now, Temporary Resolution 7325.
A resolution to amend Permanent Resolution 95-22, authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a contract for the construction of the North Water Treatment Project. Water Water Pollution Control Committee, Mr. Wing and Mr. Ailes.
Councilmember Wing.
Yes, this will be the first of three readings.
First of three readings on Temporary Resolution 7325. Temporary Resolution 7425.
A resolution to authorize the mayor to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency Water Water Pollution Control Loan Fund Program for the planning, design, and/or construction of the Frederick Street Sewer Separation Project, to execute contracts and agreements as required, and to designate a dedicated repayment source for the loan. This is through Water Water Pollution Control Committee, Mr. Wing and Ms. Teener.
Councilmember Wing.
Yeah, this is the first of three readings.
First of three readings on Temporary Resolution 7425. Temporary Resolution 7525.
A resolution to increase receipts appropriated from the unincumbered balance and amend the certificate of other sources and appropriations with the county auditor in the Special Improvement District Fund 2020. This is through Finance Committee, Mr. Schoonover and Mrs. Bitler.
Councilmember Schoonover. First of three readings on Temporary Resolution 7525. Temporary Resolution 7625.
A resolution to authorize the Service Safety Director to enter into an agreement for the engineering services for the Lawrence Street Pump Station Replacement Project. This is through Water Water Pollution Control Committee, Mr. Wing and Mr. Ailes.
Councilmember Wing.
This is the first of three readings.
First of three readings on Temporary Resolution 7625. Temporary Resolution 7725.
A resolution to authorize the mayor to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement Program and to execute contracts as required. This is through Water Water Pollution Control Committee, Mr. Wing and Ms. Teener.
Councilmember Wing.
First of three readings.
First of three readings on Temporary Resolution 7725. We'll now move on to the reading of ordinances, beginning with the third reading of temporary ordinance 3125.
An ordinance to amend the Lancaster Codified Ordinances, Part 11, Planning and Zoning, Title III, zoning and property restrictions, and to adopt Chapter 1131, short-term rentals. This is through Code Enforcement and Zoning Committee, Mr. Sully and Ms. Su.
Councilmember Sully.
Thank you, Council President. Before we proceed on this, I would like to open up for discussion with council. We've had a couple of things come up here this week and before we put this forward, I'm just going to invite any member of council to.
Okay.
For discussion.
Should we have, should we have the?
I'd like to make a motion to table.
So we have a motion to table. Do we have a second? We have a second. We have a motion and a second to table. This is a non-debatable motion. Please call the rule.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mrs. Bitler?
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Lochtenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover? Mr. Sully?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
And Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Motion to table passes 10 to 0. Temporary ordinance 3125 is tabled. We'll move to the second reading of ordinances, beginning with temporary ordinance 3625.
An ordinance to amend permanent ordinance 54-24, the non-union pay ordinance, and to declare an emergency. This is through Code Enforcement and Zoning Committee, Mr. Sully and Ms. Lochtenberg.
Councilmember Sully.
Hi, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to let our city safety director just kind of cover this again, exactly what we're doing with this legislation.
Yes, thank you, Councilman Sully. As you recall, at our last council meeting, I indicated that we have a current position in the city in our utility departments that somewhat underutilized and the individual in that position used to work for the building department had started getting trained on zoning and zoning inspections prior to going to the utility department. Since our zoning individual retired earlier this year, we are wanting to move that individual from utilities into the zoning. However, to do that, we needed to add an additional zoning inspector in our city ordinance, allowing us to move and pay that person under the zoning, under the zoning budget. And I'm happy to answer any additional questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the third reading of ordinance temporarily numbered 37, I'm sorry, 3625.
Second. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of temporary ordinance 3625. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the rule.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mrs. Bitler?
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Lochtenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Sully?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
And Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of temporary ordinance 3625 passes 10 to 0. Councilmember Sully.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and there upon the written record ordinance numbered 3625.
Second. We have a motion to pass gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Ordinance 3625. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the rule.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mrs. Bitler?
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Lochtenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Sully?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
And Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Temporary ordinance 3625 passes 10 to 0. Temporary ordinance 3725.
Sorry. An ordinance to establish new permanent right-of-way along a new center line of connection with the Arbor Valley Drive Rehabilitation Project, to vacate the existing Arbor Valley Drive right-of-way once the new Arbor Valley Drive right-of-way is dedicated, and to acquire a new easement for a water main in the connection with the new Lancaster High School. This is through Public Works Committee, Ms. Teener and Mr. Ailes.
Councilmember Teener.
Second of three readings.
Second of three readings on Temporary Ordinance 3725. Temporary Ordinance 3825.
An ordinance amending Part 5, General Offenses, code of the Lancaster Codified Ordinances and adopting Chapter 5, 6, 8, can't be prohibited. This is through Law Committee, Mrs. Kreitz and Mrs. Bitler.
Councilmember Kreitz.
Yes, thank you. Second of three readings.
Second of three readings on Temporary Ordinance 3825. Temporary Ordinance 3925.
An ordinance to grant the South Central Power Company its successors in a sign, in a science, a franchise fee for their right to acquire, construct, maintain, and operate in the streets, their, their fair, their affairs, alleys, bridges, and public places of the city of Lancaster, Ohio, and its successors, lines for the transmission and distributions for electric energy into the city of Lancaster, and the inhibitions, inhibitions thereof for light, heat, power, and other purposes. a franchise fee for their right to acquire, construct, maintain, and operate in the streets, their fair, their affairs, alleys, bridges, and public places of the City of Lancaster, Ohio, and its successors, lines for the transmission and distributions for electric energy into the City of Lancaster, and the inhibitions thereof for light, heat, power, and other purposes, and for the transmission of the same within, through or across said City of Lancaster, and to declare an emergency. This is through Law Committee, Mr. Bizjack and Mr. Schoonover.
Councilmember Bizjack.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion that council place on the table temporary ordinance thirty-nine twenty-five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to table ordinance thirty-nine twenty-five. Once again, this is a non-debatable motion, please call the rule.
Mr. Ailes.
Yes.
Mrs. Bittler.
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack.
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoope.
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Sully.
No.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
And Mr. Wing.
Yes.
Motion to table passes eight to two. Now move on to first reading of ordinances, beginning with temporary ordinance forty twenty-five.
Council President, on that last vote, wouldn't that be seven to one with an abstention?
No.
No.
No, I'm sorry.
Eight to one.
Eight to one with an abstention?
Eight to one with an abstention. We'll go that way.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Okay.
First reading?
Yes.
Sorry, okay. An ordinance to accept the final plat for the Taylor Commercial Subdivision and to declare an emergency. This is through Code Enforcement and Zoning Committee, Mr. Sully and Mr. Luchtenberg.
Councilmember Sully.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading of ordinance numbered, temporarily numbered forty twenty-five. Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary ordinance forty twenty-five. Any discussion? Councilmember Sully.
None.
Thank you. Please call the rule.
Mr. Ailes.
Yes.
Mrs. Bittler.
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack.
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz.
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Sully.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
And Mr. Wing.
Yes.
Motion to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, temporary ordinance forty twenty-five passes ten to zero. Temporary ordinance forty-one twenty-five.
An ordinance to amend Title III, Chapters nine-one-five and nine-one-six, by repealing and replacing existing sections nine-one-five point zero four A, nine-one-five point zero five A, and nine-one-six point zero eight C of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Lancaster, Ohio, and to declare an emergency. This is through Water Water Pollution Committee, Mr. Wing and Mr. Ailes.
Councilmember Wing.
Yes, this is the first of three readings.
First of three readings on temporary ordinance forty-one twenty-five. Temporary ordinance forty-two twenty-five.
An ordinance to repeal Part eleven, Planning and Zoning Code, Title III, zoning and property restrictions, Chapter one-one-four-three, parking, loading spaces, access in vehicular and pedestrian connectivity, Sections one-one-four-three point one-three, parking and commercial vehicles in residential districts in the Codified Ordinances of the City of Lancaster, and to declare an emergency. This is through Law Committee, Mrs. Kreitz and Mrs. Bittler.
Councilmember Kreitz.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third readings of ordinance temporarily numbered forty-two twenty-five. Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary ordinance forty-two twenty-five. Any discussion?
Yes, just briefly. The reason we need suspension is because the current zoning code conflicts with the parking code, and we are unable to enforce that without having this cleaned up first.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the rule.
Mr. Ailes.
Yes.
Mrs. Bittler.
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack.
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoope.
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Sully.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
And Mr. Wing.
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary ordinance forty-two twenty-five passes ten to zero. Councilmember Kreitz.
Yes, thank you. Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, ordinance temporarily numbered forty-two twenty-five. Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, temporary ordinance forty-two twenty-five. Any further discussion?
Nothing further, thank you.
Thank you. Please call the rule.
Mr. Ailes.
Yes.
Mrs. Bittler.
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack.
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoope.
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Sully.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
And Mr. Wing.
Yes.
Motion to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, temporary ordinance forty-two twenty-five passes ten to zero. Temporary ordinance forty-three twenty-five.
An ordinance to amend Lancaster Codified Ordinance, Part three, Traffic Code, Title seven, Parking, Chapter three fifty-one, Parking generally by repealing and replacing Section three-five-one point one-six, Trucks on Residential Streets, and to declare an emergency. This is through Law Committee, Mrs. Kreitz and Mr. Bizjack.
Councilmember Kreitz.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third readings of ordinance temporarily numbered forty-three twenty-five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary ordinance forty-three twenty-five. Any discussion? Councilmember Kreitz.
Yes, we are asking for suspension because this is the second part of that code cleanup with the parking code. It is updated, and there was a correction to the fourteen thousand that the law director provided to the clerk prior to the meeting.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the rule.
Mr. Ailes.
Yes.
Mrs. Bittler.
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack.
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoope.
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Sully.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
And Mr. Wing.
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of forty-three twenty-five passes ten to zero. Councilmember Kreitz.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, ordinance temporarily numbered forty-three twenty-five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass, gross and enter upon the written record, temporary ordinance forty-three twenty-five. Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the rule.
Mr. Ailes.
Yes.
Mrs. Bittler.
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack.
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoope.
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Sully.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
And Mr. Wing.
Yes.
Motion to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, temporary ordinance forty-three twenty-five passes ten to zero. Temporary ordinance forty-four twenty-five.
An ordinance to amend Lancaster Codified Ordinance, Part seven, Business Regulation Code, Chapter seven-zero-nine, cultivation, processing, or dispensing of medical marijuana or adult use of cannabis by repealing and replacing Sections seven-zero-nine point zero five, review and reapproval of adult-use cannabis moratorium. This is through Law Committee, Mrs. Kreitz and Mrs. Bittler.
Councilmember Kreitz.
Yes, thank you, first of three readings.
First of three readings on temporary ordinance forty-four twenty-five. I did have a question, Law Director. I know this is an extension of, would be an extension of the existing moratorium for an additional two years. If the state legislature would act within that time, can council revisit it within that two-year period?
You can repeal and replace.
Okay, thank you very much. Now move on to temporary ordinance forty-five twenty-five.
An ordinance to repeal and replace existing permanent ordinance twenty-one twenty-four, section of setting public improvement inspection fees pursuant to Lancaster Codified Ordinance, or Codified eleven-zero-seven point zero-two A, and declare an emergency. This is through Law Committee, Mrs. Kreitz and Mr. Bizjack.
Councilmember Kreitz.
Yes, first of three readings.
First of three readings on temporary ordinance forty-five twenty-five. Tabled legislation, we have some, but I don't believe we're gonna be revisiting that this evening. Unfinished business, do we have any unfinished business this evening? Seeing none?
Excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did not see her. I did not see her hand. So, Councilmember Teener.
I just have a question for Mayor and Kerry. So, and I've talked to citizens that aren't even in my ward, too. They used to be. Now they're in five. But the concern is with the firehouse, you know, potentially going on Edie Road, who's going to be maintaining the people out like Cedar Hill Road, Hunter's Trace, Bovin, Hofac, Spring, Twin Creek, because Twin Creek is at the Y and go Hamburg is last street to the right. That has been kind of a concern, if we shut down the west side one, and with, you know, there's three road tracks, plus sometimes they do close in bad weather going up that hill on Edie Road. So, just, I mean, just wondering, who's gonna maintain all those people out through there, even if the weather isn't bad?
Most of the area you're speaking about is in Engine House One's territory, not Engine House Two.
Okay, because I know we've, you know, we've seen two go too, but that is just a concern.
No, it's, it is an important question. The situation we have here is, do we have a four-firehouse model or a three-firehouse model? And that has been debated for a long, long time. And the current recommendation is a three-firehouse model, but it's by no means a final conclusion. It's where we're at right now. I will tell you that we need to add about twenty-five percent more people if we're gonna have a four-firehouse model.
Well, but I will say that Lancaster has three medics, and even Columbus has two. So, that's just...
Your point is well taken.
Yes, so, just wanted to throw that out there.
Certainly a consideration. So, to Becky's point about, you know, who's covering what, I will tell you that the boundaries of each firehouse will be realigned with the new placement, and to cover the appropriate area. The concerns about Edie Road are also valid. As you may know, we discussed here on council floor, we have submitted grants for, along with the county, for federal funding of widening and improving Edie Road. The county's also submitted, along with the city's support, replacement of both bridges. All those things are important, regardless of where the firehouse is, they're important for that area of the city. Edie Road's just not quite ready to handle the traffic it currently handles, but we talked about, we own the piece of property on Edie Road currently. It's valued at about a half a million dollars. It saves the taxpayers that expenditure to buy another piece of property similar to it nearby. We know that the northern corridor of the city is currently unserved by appropriate location for a firehouse, and hasn't been served for a long, long time. Response times to River Valley Highlands, for instance, are significant, and more than what we would like to have. So the placement of Edie Road is, will solve that problem. Doesn't mean we don't need additional facilities. We ought, in this discussion, is also moving Engine House One to a more centralized location, which will cover exactly the area you're speaking of. And Engine House Three is currently scheduled, or planned, I should say, to stay on-site and be rebuilt at the same location. We're growing. Things are gonna change. More people are moving to Lancaster. These things now need to be continually evaluated and see where we're at. Today, we say this is the best plan we have. I think it's a good plan. I like the locations. I would tell you that they aren't just hazardly placed. There's a lot of thought. We've spoken with outside advisors about where we might put our plants and how, or, I'm sorry, our fire stations, and how they might serve the city. So this is where we're at today, but we're constantly evaluating response times and locations and what we need for the future. I envision at some point, we will need a fourth firehouse, but it's not today. We're currently not able to fund it today. So, I hope that answered your question.
Well, but you know, like, you know, like, even though the west side's still there, you know, if everybody's, which everybody has gone to, two medics, that could kind of solve a problem, too, instead of doing three. I'm just throwing that out there for thought, you know?
Staffing of the medics is a conversation we're currently having.
Okay. Because that might solve some of the four men, or four firehouse problems.
Our fire professionals are gonna tell you that they're providing you with three certified paramedics, getting the best service available. I will tell you, you are right about other cities and what they do, and they do not staff with three paramedics. They might staff with two, and they might have an EMT driving, and they might have a driver driving, and not, so it's done different in different cities. Currently, we're able to provide three medics in our squad response, and we're doing that successfully under our current staffing levels. But your point is well taken.
Council or Service Safety Director, Woody.
Thank you. I will just add that I know, I want to say it was maybe two years ago, the fire department did show one of their studies that by locating the firehouse to Edie Road, and again, this was a long time ago, it showed all of the response times. I'm sure that Chief Schultz would be happy to reshare that with everyone, showing what all the response times will be, where they're gonna be going, and what this response times look like by moving that engine house to, over to Edie Road.
Maybe they need to put that out for the public, maybe on the website, that would help, you know, answer people's questions.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because I want to make sure every, I mean, I know they do service everyone, but
heavily. So, I know they already have that information readily available, and yes, we'd be happy to get that information out.
Yeah, if you could put it on the website.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. No additional unfinished...oh, Councilmember Schoonover? Was that a...was that...
I don't know if it's unfinished business or new business.
Correct.
So, addressing the tabling of the short-term rentals this evening?
Okay.
Do we have a plan for that? Was there...what are we...that was the third reading. We're tabling it, so what's the plan?
Councilmember Kreitz?
I can say that I had reached out to Chastelin Carter and spoke with her about some potential updates, and I didn't see those updates in the current version, so I wanted to loop back with her and find out why we didn't see an updated version.
Okay.
That was me.
I've had some questions come up, and I just want to make sure we're tight on this before we put it back out.
That's fine. I mean, that's fine. I just, we didn't have any discussion before there was a motion to table it, so I was a little thrown off on what...
I thought we were gonna have one, to be honest with you.
So, it just is fine, but if it's gonna linger, what are we doing with it? So, we're expecting...we're requesting changes to it as it sits?
Or at least discussions. So, my concern, if...we want to go through this?
You can.
Good.
I have concerns with the FBI background checks. If we have background checks that are...that the resident or owner has already completed, we should accept those if they're valid, right, within that period of time. We don't have anything in there about that. There's also some concern around parking and the restrictions that are in there, as well as...I apologize, my memory just escaped me. The amount of fees per unit and whether or not that's one unit, if there are multiple units within one residence, and how we're going to work that out. Those were my questions to Chastelin that I still have unanswered, and I want to get those worked out.
Okay. Any further discussion on that particular topic? We will move on to new business. Currently, we will go through...we'll start on this side for committee updates. We'll begin with code enforcement and zoning committee, Mr. Solley.
Nothing's really changed from our last meeting, other than we're...we tabled the short-term.
Okay.
And we're gonna...I want to dive into it a little more. I have a number of questions I didn't bring up that...
Okay. And your next committee meeting is when? Do we...do you know?
It is in November.
Okay, thank you. Safety Committee, Councilmember Bisjack?
No updates at this time. Next committee meeting's October 10.
Thank you. Administrative Services Committee, Councilmember Luchtenberg?
No updates. Our next committee meeting will be October 15, 8 o'clock.
Thank you very much. Service Committee, Councilmember Ailes?
No updates. Service Committee meeting, next meeting is next Friday at 8:00 a.m.
Thank you.
9:05.
Lock Committee, Councilmember Kreitz?
No updates. The updates were pretty much in the packet tonight, and the next meeting is November.
Thank you. Public Works Committee, Councilmember Teener?
Yes. The only update I have, I really...I had a complete update last meeting, but our...we're gonna try to move our meeting from September 12 to the 19th, just waiting to hear back.
Okay, thank you. We had Finance Committee. Is there anything else you would like to offer, Councilmember Schoonover?
No. I mean, there's a ton of money floating around. We all had questions on some aspect of one or another piece of legislation. So, we know that we're looking for Water Department, new water plant, budgeted items, I guess, that Denise is gonna get to us. And again, I mean, plenty of valid questions, so I'm hoping that we start to see from your superintendents, like, their year-to-date budget in your meetings moving forward.
Thank you for that reminder. Yes, we should be looking for departments to be providing in committees their year-to-date budgets so that we have a picture moving into